Yeah.
So Title 74244C says the Declaration and Justifications shall be required. And it's second sentence after we started.
That's what we have, Bob? So is that a place where, right there?
Yeah, so in this, it's supposed to be justification, it says shall be required. Seems to be in the third one.
So that'd be about the employee issue, or isn't that what you're going for? So would the, doesn't that mean about employees? Well, I mean, that's what the, the one B is about, an employee issue.
You just want it wrote out, it's not what the code says, it's not what you're saying?
Yeah, I'm just pointing out that it just says the Declaration and Justifications shall be required. It's there, it's there.
I mean, that's what it states, if that's where our subsection is, and that's what identifies us and what is written here.
I think the subsection is about employee issues, Wendy.
Yeah, I'm not that familiar.
Yeah, I just turned it in.
I'm, I'm with the American States. Do you want it to, you want it to be clearer, is that what you're wanting?
I don't know, I'm just pointing it out, that the justification has to be included.
So what do you think, I mean, what do you, what, what would you like to see there?
Whatever the statute requires. If that suffices, then that's up, I don't know.
Do you want Wendy to go look it up, or?
He's got it in front of him, so if you want me to talk to the interns tomorrow, I can, and we can provide these minutes at the next meeting.
To clarify, I don't want anything but to follow whatever the statute requires.
What does it say, B on there? Like, what's subsection B means? Well, I'm just looking at what I, at what subsection B means, so like, if that means employee issues, then... Well, it's on the sheet, I just turned it in, you know, I just turned it in. Subsection B does take to the consider, to consider the evaluation dismissal or disciplinary of or hearing complaints or charges brought against public officer, employee, staff, member, or individual agent or public school student.
So would you rather it be wrote out than just subsection B?
Did we consider the evaluation dismissal or disciplining of or hearing complaints or charges brought against anyone?
We did. But it's, it was under, it was, it was privacy thing, that's why we need to do session. So I think that's, yeah, I think it was more of one of that one. So, are we?
Yeah, I'll say no.
I, well, I, I mean, I don't think we need to get too crazy because of privacy issues, but it does say subsection B, so...
I'll say the motion, you have on the table. Okay, motion.
I move to approve the minutes. Wendy's second, is it? In the June meeting, right?
There was no motion to approve the call.
No, I, I approved the, oh, this, sorry, special meeting in July. Does somebody want to make the second motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the special meeting in July 5th, if you want to.
The OCSAR for, OCSAR for 1545, is that chemicals for the unemployment plans?
Yes.
374 from the law reporting without us from the fire department?
Yes. That was all 687 with the whole month, so...
Can I make a motion to accept the bill this time, Wendy, if you want to?
Hi, Council, I am Krista Baker, here once again for SIA, I have a couple of different things to talk to you about today. The first one being wastewater community developer block grant, that you all, that you already have, I know you're administering the grant work. First things first, we do need to go ahead and designate a fair housing resource person. Typically, that is the city clerk or someone else that you all have identified in the community that is going to be the point of contact for fair housing. Also, designating a 504 ADA coordinator, also, that's also typically the city clerk, or someone else that you have designated as the point of contact for all of those issues related to ADA compliance. And then, Council, does we do adopt the resolution, the policy of non-discrimination of the disability? Have you had a chance to look at that?
Yeah, it's been our email.
So I guess, first of all, those are three different points, so is, is this an action item for you, is this something that you want to go ahead and, okay, so do you, are you, do you nominate Wendy, do you nominate someone else?
And you said that's usually who we go with, is the city clerk?
It's typically the city clerk, yeah, and it does need to go down in our minutes to be sent to Congress, so that is, so if that doesn't need to be actionized, that's how you, how you address that, and if you want to add that, that's okay, so I don't...
If we have to do this, is it, do we get any block grants for the sewer stuff?
No, the wastewater?
Wastewater?
Yeah.
So do we have to do this for the wastewater?
That's a dark question.
This is for the wastewater.
Oh, for the wastewater?
Oh, this is for the wastewater?
This is for the wastewater, this is for the unemployment plans.
You were talking about the water.
So this has nothing to do with the splash pad?
Okay.
This is what you're already, this is the grant that you already have, and we're already administering.
Well, I move to, uh, do we have a point, is that what we do, or?
Yeah, I mean, it needs to go down in the minutes, so I don't know if you want to, so typically, it is the city clerk, so I can now, if I can step in here and say, let's go ahead and nominate Wendy, that's your...
I move to nominate Wendy for the, um, fair housing resource person.
Yeah.
Add Wendy Sanino.
Wendy Sanino.
Okay.
I'll second.
And then it also has to happen as well for the 504 ADA coordinator.
Same person?
Typically, yes.
But we could nominate Bonnie for this one, right?
Yeah, it's up to you.
I move to nominate Bonnie for the 504 EDA coordinator.
I'll second. Teamwork.
Okay, excellent, so, so there are some actions that need to come later with that, but that's going to be me now working with Wendy on that, so. And then as far as this resolution goes, I don't know, I can go ahead and read it to you, and it is, I mean, this is something with these federal grants that come down to the state that come to you, you agreed to adopt it, do you want me to go ahead and read it? Yeah, I will, okay. So, by a resolution of the City of Julietta, adopting a policy of non-discrimination on the basis of disability. Whereas, in accordance with the requirements of Title 2 of the Americans with Disabilities Act of 1990, the city will not discriminate against qualified individuals with disabilities, disabilities on the basis of disability in its services, programs, or activities. And whereas, the failure to comply with the terms and conditions of Title 2 of the Americans with Disabilities Act of 1990 may cause the City of Julietta to lose its grant or eligibility for future grants. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and the council of the City of Julietta, Idaho, the following. Section 1, it is the policy of the City of Julietta that does not discriminate on the basis of disability in its hiring or employment practices and complies with all regulations promulgated by the U.S. Equal Opportunity, I'm sorry, U.S. Equal Employment Opportunity Commission under Title 1 of the Americans with Disabilities Act, or ADA. Section 2, the City of Julietta will generally, upon request, provide appropriate aids and services leading to effective communication for qualified persons with disabilities, so they can participate equally in its programs, services, and activities, including qualified persons with disabilities, so they can participate equally in its programs, services, and activities, including qualified sign language interpreters, documents in Braille, and other ways of making information and communications accessible to people who have speech, hearing, or vision impairments. Section 3, the City of Julietta will make all reasonable modifications to policies and programs to ensure that people with disabilities have an equal opportunity to enjoy all its programs, services, and activities. For example, individuals with service animals are welcomed in city offices, even where pets are generally prohibited. Section 4, anyone who requires an auxiliary aid or service for effective communication or a modification of policies or procedures to participate in a city program, service, or activity should contact the ADA coordinator, who's down with me?
Bonnie.
Bonnie, sorry. Uh, I'll send him, and we'll go ahead and put the phone records over there right now. As soon as possible, but no later than 48 hours before the scheduled event. Section 5, the ADA does not require the city to take any action that would fundamentally alter the nature of its programs or services, or impose an undue financial or administrative burden. Section 6, complaints that a city program, service, or activity is not accessible to persons with disabilities should be directed to the ADA coordinator. Section 7, the city will not place a surcharge on a particular individual with a disability or any group of individuals with disabilities to cover the cost of providing auxiliary aids or services, or reasonable modifications of policy, such as retrieving items from locations that are open to the public, but are not accessible to persons who use witches. And then, resolved by the city council and approved by the mayor on this day, today, and it will be signed by the mayor as well as Wendy.
So you'll fix that, and so mainly?
Yeah. So then the action item is to adopt this, so you have to adopt the resolution.
Okay, I'll make a motion, you guys can, make a motion to adopt Resolution 2022-02, noted under the Americans with Disabilities Act.
Thank you for that, next on the agenda is the splash pad, Lisa and Casey have been working incredibly hard, and we've got a full support staff here, and I'm turning it over. I mean, the action item to go along with this is, is either to accept or deny the support, the city's support of having SIA write the grant application. It's a $3,500 charge to write the application, but it does count as match once the award is awarded.
And when is the application due?
The application due date is September 19th of this year, so ideally, you would have submitted that prior to the court.
Okay, so, okay, so, thank you guys for having us again. And, so we, hopefully you guys got the email, the PDF, I know, I have a lot to do, so we'll kind of show it to you guys. Okay, and, so, we did, after speaking to kind of some other community members, and Justin, and kind of looking at the park, and everyone's love for the butterfly garden, we decided that there, there could be a better spot, so, um, the new location that we're looking at is the berm between the butterfly garden and the softball field. So, right now, it's just kind of a big berm, at one time, there were different trees planted with plaques put up, but it has since been overgrown, blackberries, and different stuff like that, and it's pretty unusable right now. So that is our new proposed location, so that spot, we would flatten it out, obviously, there would be some trees that we need to cut down, flatten it out, and then, it was, it's a good 40 by 50 square foot spot. So, and we feel all of the pre-work could be done by volunteers, so we don't think that that would cause any extra, any extra short biz or anything like that, so. And then, looking forward, so, the first picture that you guys see is that, a spot just looking straight at the new, the new location. The second spot, it shows that how overgrown it is, so the butterfly garden is so beautiful, and everything looks so kept up, and, and then we have this spot that's just kind of overgrown, and really, nobody takes care of it, and everything like that, so we feel with the splash pad there, it would definitely clean up the area, make it more usable, you know, more usable area in the park. And as you can see, there's already a water line, a city water line to the location, so that would help when we are putting in the different pipes and water, so there's already a city one there. I mean, it goes on electrical boxes as well, so we'd be able to run power to run everything. And this is looking, so standing at the proposed location, looking at the softball field, yeah.
I'm not sure, but I believe that this power box is actually connected to the baseball association.
Oh, okay.
So you want to definitely check with them before you just, yeah.
Okay, absolutely.
Because that's their, their meter over there.
Okay, absolutely. The next picture shows looking towards the softball field, so there's been some talk that, you know, some of the softball fans, and, you know, maybe put an extra seating back there, so we could possibly, you know, put in either piggly mole or extra concrete, that would not only benefit the splash pad family, but also baseball family as well, baseball season's going. And then the next one is looking, standing where hangs softball field, looking back at that berm again. So that is our new location, so we did get, someone did do a soil analysis, and I will try my best to, so if he is here, if you have, if you there's any questions?
I'm not saying a word.
So, based on my understanding, so it is, you know, the soil as well though, is, I mean, it's not a great drain area soil, and it is in a 100-year flood plan, which we all knew that. So I did talk to Shane Taylor, and he said a possible would be to put in a drain below the concrete work that would then be piped out to a dry well. So that would be a way to, if any water did get under there, that we could pipe it away from, would look away from the concrete, so, and Shane did say that he could come out next week and kind of give us a local bid and kind of look at the area a little better. So is that kind of, was there anything that I missed?
As you say, my concern with a dry well is it's probably not going to infiltrate very well.
Okay.
Just because you're so close to the riverbed, and groundwater's not very deep, the type of soil you have is not, I don't know if that it's going to infiltrate very well.
Okay, okay.
You can get the water away, but once it's in there, it's probably going to surcharge out of there during the wetter season.
Okay, okay. So, I mean, we, we definitely, you know, will have them, you know, a contractor and engineer come in and look at that, you know, now that we know that it is, you know, the kind of soil that is there, so it is something we'll have to address, but, you know, we feel very fairly confident that that would, we would be able to get the water out of there. And, we did, so, as far as, like, I know there were some issues, where questions on insurance, so we did call American Insurance, which currently already insures the park for this, yeah, the park for the city, and they said, because it is in the park, and that it is already covered by the liability insurance that is already there, there's no extra cost. So it would be the same thing as if a child, if a child fell off the swing set for the slide, so it would be the same insurance, so if something were to happen at the splash pad, it would be covered by that same liability insurance, so there would be no extra charge on that.
So, in your proposed new location in the red box?
Uh-huh.
Like, what trees, and is that pole that we have to, that power pole, is that going to have to be taken out as well?
No, the power pole won't have to be taken out, the trees, it would be all of the trees and shrubbery behind, so that big, the big one at the front towards the parking could stay, that sign might possibly have to be moved, but it would just be all the shrubbery kind of behind, so...
The question is, would it be?
Yeah, the overgrown area. Yeah.
Yeah, she probably said, you know, like, she doesn't care for it, she takes care of all the other area of the park, and Justin is, you know, he's busy, he doesn't have time to get that, so it's just him overgrown, and nobody's really taking care of it.
Yeah.
I do, the big blackberry.
Yeah, yeah, and so, yeah, so it would be, it would take an unusable spot as of right now, and trying to use it as a spot. Okay, let's see, and then, we did talk to surrounding towns about their budgets and how much it has influenced their budgets.
Yeah, we talked to Kuzki, Orbino, and Potlatch, I spent the time talking to them on the phones, and Kuzki, he was very, very helpful, for sure, all three of them 100% recommended for our community, they believe that it will bring a ton of foot traffic, and if you still want to live, it could still have entertainment. They, and Kuzki, he was the only one able to give me a dollar amount, but he also said to take into effect that they have big lights that overlook their splash pad, because they run there from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., and it is about $800 a year, it's all, so it comes out about $67 a month.
And that's with?
And that's with their huge lights, and he said it could be comparable, since we want to do a recirculation thing, so having that expense with filters and stuff like that, he said that it would be pretty comparable. They winterize theirs, but it's not necessary either, he said, so it's just a matter of what you want to do. In Potlatch, he said, we put them in colder areas than this, and they have no, so, and no one of the three has had any maintenance to be done on any of them. Kuzki and Orbino put theirs in 2014 and 2015, and they still have not had any maintenance.
And what's our cost per chemical, was he hearing?
Uh, it runs, yeah, we were, uh, two hundred, yeah, yeah, so a thousand dollars annually is what he said, Kuzki said, is what it runs for their splash pad. It's just put into their parking recs fund, since, but honestly, the profit from it has been greater for their, I mean, they have people that travel all over to kind of the splash pad, and it just brings your businesses, your local restaurants, your grocery stores, I mean, he says it outweighs spending the $67.
And the only chemical that it uses is the chlorine, like, the bulk chlorine that goes in and sanitizes it, and then, Anna Three's winterizing agent, so those are the only, yeah, those are the only, and we'll talk about more about the system that we're looking into, but it's all automatic, so the bulk tank gets filled up with the chlorine, and then the system tests it, and then it automatically dispenses the chlorine as needed. So it doesn't take any extra maintenance to test it or anything like that, so the system will do it all itself.
And we've been quoted for that, too.
Yeah, that's the point.
We will see that on your bids, that's the one we're going for, because we want to make it as low maintenance as possible for everyone.
And then, so talking to him, he said that with the recirculating, there's roughly a 70% water retention, so you will boost that 30% from splashing and evaporation and that kind of stuff, but it roughly is about 70% that the tank can save, so we would have to fill up a little bit, but roughly only 30%.
And then, yes, so Shane Miller, and I did talk to the mayor in Potlatch, so those were my two contacts there, they both said, you know, like, it's a wonderful opportunity for this community, I mean, Potlatch has a pool, too, and he says it costs a whole lot more to have a pool than it does the splash pad. He recommends that, you know, if we would like, we can all go out there and have lunch and watch Splash Pad, he said he'd invite us all up, so you can see how wonderful it really is. They, he was our first donation, actually, the mayor of Potlatch, so he has already donated to the cost.
Yeah, I think the biggest thing we got, talking to everyone, is just how low maintenance they are, and the, the company that we're going with is the same company that they're using, so it's the same quality of fixtures, and they haven't had anything that they really have to, you know, as far as daily maintenance or anything like that, there's really nothing that would be added, so, you know, all of it is very self-contained. So, let's see. So, the splash pad is 40 by 50, the ones that we, so we got quoted on two different ones, a 2,500 square foot, a 2,000 square foot, the only difference is the different fixtures, so they just kind of quote you on popular fixtures, so we can kind of pick and choose as well on the different fixtures if we wanted to. And, that was just a filler picture, okay, so benefits that are really great for having a splash pad in your community, one of them, like Casey said, the increased traffic through town, I mean, splash pads are a hotspot for families to go to, you know, they're not, because the kids just run through them, so it's not as, you know, as big of a, if you go to a pool or anything like that, you know, as a, as a mom, as a family, just going to the park and, you know, sitting there letting the kids run through, I mean, we've... I mean, we will travel to do that, we have traveled to do that, so it will bring more traffic through town, which would be really great.
They don't have a lot of people anyway, Lake Derry, um, Florville, Troy, they don't have the splash pads.
Yeah.
So you bring some of them down.
Yeah, absolutely.
So.
Absolutely. And during, during baseball.
For one another quarter.
Yeah, and during baseball and softball games, um, you know, kids can enter during then, uh, if we wanted them on during. I think it might get a little early in the season for some of that, you know, the later in the season games. During the Blackberry, we could still have it on, and that would be a big attraction for having families, bringing more families out. You know, we could advertise that we have the splash pad there. Um, and then, uh, more things for families to do during the summer. So, um, our little camp has grown tremendously. I mean, you know, our school district has grown. Um, we are at an all-time high for families right now. Um, we're bringing more, that is the, um, you know, the people that are moving in is families. So, and we talked about, um.
Just an example to show you how much we've grown. I work in the preschool, at the school. Um, two years ago, we had eight kids in preschool. Last year, we had twenty-one. And this year, we are gonna have twenty-four. So we are splitting to two classes and we'll have twelve in each. We just steadily are growing. Our current class is at twenty-six students. Which I know doesn't sound like a lot, but when the normal is ten or eleven, that's, that's pretty amazing. So we have people moving to this area.
Yep. And then we also, um, we do have some families in, um, you know, that was a lot, that wanted to speak as well. So the, um, we had talked about the moms group that go there every Thursday in the municipal park. Um, so, um, thank you guys for coming. And then, yeah, come on up.
So we represent a homeschool group that is maybe every Thursday, but we include families from Denver, families from Troy, just all over the whole JK Southern area, and we represent at least ten families. And I counted today and there's over thirty-nine kids and there's more fam-. This is just from this school year, so I know that there are more families moving in that are homeschooling. And we, all of our families are also growing. So, um, yeah, like Lisa said, um, with little kids, toddlers, and you've got your big kids running around too. It's a lot easier to have a splash pad than a pool. It's safety. We can't all go to the pool, like as a group. It's just not realistic for us. But splash pad is great. And also, as far as like cleanup goes, like we're there every week. And if we need to do some kind of like a dock, the splash pad area where we could pick up trash, like we're totally willing to do that. Cause we're there all year, every Thursday. So, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, you know, and I'm, so right there, you know, and thinking about, excuse me, other families coming in, you know, they're stopping at the gas station. They're getting drinks, they're giving.
They're going to the pizza thing.
Yeah, that's what I mean to that.
So, why is the board?
Another, you know, swinging more. Thank you for coming in as well. We have a local business who would benefit as well. Um, so, you know, yeah, stopping in and grabbing pizza and then going to the park to play at the splash pad. I mean, all of these things are gonna bring people through town. Uh, you know, it'll, I mean, how many times did we talk about Potlatch before they got splash pad? Not very often. You know, and now it's like, oh, we're gonna go to Potlatch, we're gonna splash pad, you know, it just, it brings so many people into town. So we think it would be a tremendous asset to Julietta.
Yes.
Um, and then again, just increased mobility for the children. So it gives them, so, I mean, study after study has showed that, you know, exercise is good for kids. We all know that, you know, running around, going to the park instead of just sitting inside, when they can't make it to Kendrick. Or when they can't, you know, it gives them something to do in Julietta that, yeah, you know, it's, it's a lot less of work, you know, for parents to pack up and go to the splash pad and go to the pool. So they're like, you know, we're out to do it and we're out to go there. You know, just getting those kids running around the park, you know.
I just wanted to let people know that I went and I talked to, like, first, Lisa, and they wanted to support. Um, Nathan's and, um, Bury Mercantile. I talked to Rose Norris. And we are going to attend her city company, which isn't until, um, the nineteenth. But she's going to recommend that they, that they support us because she wants to support the splash pad also. Um, because, you know, like you said, we, we donate to the pool, um, every year. We've, you know, we're always doing, and Rose is very much into trying to match Kendrick and Julietta. So I think that's wonderful that she's gonna do that, so we should, we should be getting some support from them. I'm not sure how much, but.
We'll, I'll. Fudges from the local real estate office, I'm ready to write a check whenever we're ready to look.
And then, did you guys want to talk about the benefits of having a splash pad and more foot traffic?
Well, we would love to, we're not prepared.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, just in case. Okay, so speaking about this, so we, you know, obviously the benefit, so let's talk about the actual splash pad, right? What does it go down to? So, um, the brand of splash pad that we chose is Rain Deck. Um, we chose them, they have wonderful customer service. You called them, you actually talked to someone. Um, it's the same person that you talk to every single time, um, as well, it is the one that Potlatch went with. So it's someone that just recently had a deal with the transaction and was happy with it. Um, they are, um, an industry leader, um, in their safety and their performance. Uh, they also have a trade-in program, we'll talk a little bit about that in a second too. Um, and like I said, they, they just were really, um, the other companies that we called, um, it was hard to get a hold of anyone. We couldn't really talk to anyone. And this Luke, like I said, I didn't put his name on there, I was still from like, we talked to Luke and he was, you know, all about sending us all this stuff. And, um, you know, even if you put it in and you have any other questions, just call me. I mean, he was great. So Rain Deck was who we went to. Um, obviously it's not set in stone if we do find, you know, something else that we'd rather. But Rain Deck was who we have, brought the quotes with. Okay, so, um, on the ones that we're doing, so the, um, the bids that we got, they have, um, post activators. So what that is, is it will be up on a post and it's like a push button. So what this is, is we set the time, so if we want it to go from, um.
Kuzki does seven to nine, he's seven A and then nine P. Orvino does, um, currently right now, he says they do ten free, and then they do a six to nine. And then Potlatch runs theirs, twelve to three, and then six to nine as well.
So at any time that we set, and it's, we can change it at any time as well, as we're like, wow, that didn't work, or there's no one this time, or, you know, we can adjust it. It's not a one time, we adjust it at any time. Um, and then we can also, you know, it'll take us some time to figure out, like, okay, do we start it like the day after school's out? Do we start it before? You know, we can adjust all of that. But anytime during our park time that a kid hits the button, this thing will run. And we also choose, does it run for five minutes, ten minutes, twenty minutes, every touch? So do we want, you know, it just kind of depends. And like, it will take some time for us to figure out our magic numbers. But it, you know, that is trying to eliminate the, it being on with no kids out there. So, um, it saves water, um, it saves electricity and from everything running. Um, so those are really, really great features. Um, and then we talked about how we can program, um, and control the water usage. So if we wanted to, you know, it's kind of nice, the brace in between, or, um, you know, if we want to go real late, real early, kind of just depends. Uh, this system has two different levels of purification. Um, this is all built into the system. Um, so the first one is the chemical one, and that is just a bulk chemical that would be filled up. And then, um, it would do the test and then it would dispense it as needed. And then it also has an LED purification. So there's two different levels. Um, the water will be cleaned as it comes out. Cause I know there was some about the. Okay, and how did we, the, the, so this was really impressive to me. So I did, um, cause I know there was a question last time on, um, the talks, and they need to replace the big fixtures. Um, so he said, he has never dealt with something where he got a call and said, this broke and needs replaced. So, um.
At Rain Deck.
Yeah, at Rain Deck. If he said, if he had to guess, he would say ten to fifteen years, but he said he has never had to do that. Excuse me. He said what happens more often is a city calls and says, we would like, yeah, a different fixture. Like they want to mix it up, uh, we want a different color, cause they'll take them back and like, um, sand lots of them down and repaint them. Um, or we want to trade in the ladybug for a flower. So that's kind of more of the things that happen. It's not that they're broken, it's that they want to refresh. So, and if that were, if that was something we wanted to do, they do, so all of the fixtures are interchangeable, except for the ones that are built into the concrete. So when we look at the actual, um, uh, pictures, the rings are built into the concrete, so those ones would not be interchangeable. But the ones that are actually sitting on top and bolted in, those are all interchangeable. So we just unbolt them, send them in, they send us a new one, and they give us credit for those ones that we sent in. So it's really, really cool for that. So what he suggested, so we had talked about, um, you know, that we wanted to be on a budget, how do we, you know, what, what's the best way to do this? So he said, make, so concrete it and plumb it for as big as you expect it to be. So ours is forty by fifty, which is two thousand square foot. So he said, plumb it for two thousand square foot, which is roughly ten features. So whether or not we buy ten features right now, that is up to us. So he said the cool thing is when it is plumbed, um, those, um, ones are called in-ground sprinklers. So those shoot up water as well that the kids can run through. And then if we want to put something over top of it later, we can. So that's kind of, he said that that was kind of a cool, yeah.
Potlatch has four, Kuzki has five, and I believe Orvino has the rings, and then like four fixtures as well. So the main is four, so we could just keep it at that.
Yeah, yeah, we could just keep it at that and then just have in-ground features, and that would lower the bid as well. Let's see. And then we talked about, I know, um, we were a little concerned about the concrete getting slippery. Um, and then, and so possibly doing a, like, pad or something. He said that those do wear out more. So, you know, after doing tons of these, um, he said, he suggested, and I said, all this, we'll just read it. He suggested concrete with a cool dec coating on the concrete that is acrylic laced and knocked out the texture with a light group finish. So, I mean, he knows what he's doing. Um, you know, that is to give it some grip on there, um, you know, and they, they do it all the time. And that works the best. So, um, and we can tint it any color we want. So that was kind of cool. So if we wanted to, you know, get crazy with the design, so. Okay.
One of the examples.
Yes. So the first picture is the twenty-five hundred square foot splash pad. So you can see the different, um, features that are on there. And, and then, um, and we can, so those, he just kind of builds it for, um, for that footage with popular features. So, um, we can change out any of them, but this was just the first design. So, um, yeah, we could add any, take any out. The rings would be permanent, but otherwise not. And then the next one is an aerial view. And then the, um, the next picture is the two thousand square foot. And I personally felt like the two thousand square foot one, I thought it was kind of, kind of fun with the flowers and everything next to the butterfly garden. I thought that would be really fun. And this one, um, just personally, I felt like, um, a lot more older kids could use it. It's kind of bigger fixtures that like, you're gonna run under and stuff. Yeah, some of the older kids could use it as well as the younger kids, so I, I personally feel that that's looking. And then there's another aerial of it. And all of these layouts can be changed as well, which is when we get it going. Okay, so down to the numbers. Okay, so the twenty-five hundred square foot, for all the piping, all the fixtures, all everything, is one thou- or a hundred and five thousand, seven, seven, six. Okay, and then the two thousand square foot is a hundred and eleven thousand. Okay, so that, and then, uh, they send us, so they have a construction person that they work with. So these are out of town, out of state, this is just who they use. So they do a bid for, and they haven't looked at the spot, they haven't done anything. They say for a twenty-five hundred square foot splash pad, we would charge a hundred and ninety-four thousand to put it in. So altogether, three hundred thousand. So that number's scary. It's like, whoo, gosh, that's really scary. So, but, um, so CDA, the CDA grant that we are putting in for, um, does, um, match up to two hundred and fifty thousand. Okay, also, um, that hundred and ninety-four thousand for installation, if we have someone local putting in, it's gonna be way less. So, um, and then, yeah, and we already called and we're hoping to get, um, Taylor out there next week to give a local bid. So as long as, um, and then again, so how can we lower those initial bids? Um, they could plumb the in-ground sprinklers and not do as many above ground, um, fixtures for now. And then we can fundraise for the other fixtures as we go. Um, local contractors, a lot of companies might be willing to donate, volunteer, um, or drastically lower the prices per community project. Okay, um, I mean, you know, we would love to have people's names everywhere and, you know, definitely lots of promotion and all of that too. Um, and then the CDA grant, so. Okay, so we figured a more realistic goal would be the seventy-five thousand. So that's what we would probably have to fundraise. Um, and that, I think, I think that's a top end as well. I don't think that, I think that is even over what we'll actually need when it comes down to it, when we get the local bid and if we get the CDA grant. Um, but just to get a number out there, we think roughly seventy-five thousand. So how are we gonna do that? Um, we came up with this little flyer. It's like a level-based, um, it's kind of more for businesses. Um, there are different tiers, um, that businesses can donate for and personal as well. Um, and then we will come up with different, um, benefits for each tier. Yeah, like the, like a sign down there or, um, bricks or anything. Okay, and then different fundraising ideas. Um, so we talked about lemonade sales at the park. Um, Bonnie Ryan's are really great. Um, so there's these little puppet bracelets that we all know are all the rage. Um, Selena knows, so she's gonna, um, we sell those at the car show this weekend. Um, so and then the profits go back. Um, booths at local festivals, um, to sell different things and get the word out, uh, social media.
And we are on a few agendas for different, um, associations in this area for donations too, so.
Um, and then we are supposed to talk as well as possible, collaboration with Kendrick. Um, and then, um, this website, there is a, a website, um, that is super cool. I wanted to show you guys. So, oh, I turned off my computer, that's not helpful. Um, so it's super cool. So they're trying to fundraise for a splash pad as well. Um, and they, um, so they have a really cool website that, um, so here's their website, um, and you can kind of look at it later too, um, I put the link on there. But, um, so they are actually, so they have a picture of their proposed splash pad. And then they are having individual people or businesses or whatever sponsor each fixture. So they have a list of all the fixtures, how much a sponsorship of them would cost, and then they're saying if it's still available or not. Which I thought was really, really cool. Um, they also have, um, uh, order of brick forms. So for, um, there are different levels, like fifty dollars is two lines, and then it goes all the way up to three hundred dollars per brick for four lines or something. And you put, you know, um, a family's name or a daughter's name, and the bricks will like line either the outside or walking up to the splash pad. Or, you know, there's different ways, um, that we can kind of get the fundraiser out there. Okay, so it comes down to the question, will you guys partner with us to write the CDA grant and bring a splash pad?
And I really think we can probably get really close to that thirty-five hundred for writing the grant.
Yes.
Cause we have so much.
Yeah, so it does take the thirty-five hundred to write the grant, um.
We have had multiple local businesses.
Yeah, we have till September to raise that thirty-five hundred. Um, so, you know, we're, we're just asking you guys to partner with us to try to get that grant written. Yes.
So then after, say that we say yes, or whatever, then is it on the city for the two thousand dollars a year to maintain it? Or are you going to continue trying to get a, a budget, like a reserve to pay that, or is it gonna be all?
I mean, it kind of just depends on how, I mean, we can, I mean, we're, we're not just gonna be like, okay, splash pad, bye. You know, I mean, we can absolutely.
We definitely want to talk to you.
Yeah, we can absolutely continue to work with you guys and fundraise, have a booth every year to try to fundraise for funds. Um, we talked about, um, like the lemonade, we thought it'd be really fun too, like once, if a splash pad got going. Um, you know, we could do lemonade stands like, you know, one Saturday a month for the three months of summer or something. Have like a lemonade party or something and bring some lemonade and buy donations, sell cups of lemonade down there. You know what I mean? And we could put a donation box down there for people that are, oh my gosh, I love your, yeah, I love your splash pad. Here's something, help us run our splash pad, you know, and have a donation box down there. Um, so, I mean, we can definitely, you know, we're not just gonna get it and be like, alright, later. You know, I mean, we can absolutely continue to work. I mean, um, absolutely.
So what happens if CDA can't get to two hundred and fifty thousand?
If we don't get the grant, then we are back to still this fundraising. So, um, you know.
So, a yes on your part, it's more work for us to fund.
Might take a little bit longer for us to fundraise, um, and to get, so we would probably go to that website idea where we have the splash pad there and we say, you know, trying to get more donation. Cause on their website, they're trying to raise three hundred thousand dollars.
Plus we can look into Potlatch mayor, he did tell me about some other grants that we could possibly look into as well. Cause they did most of theirs through grants.
We can always, if for whatever reason we aren't successful in getting this grant, we can always turn around and write it again next year.
Yeah, so we have plenty of other options of people who've been supportive and.
Yeah, I think, uh, with your guys' yes today, um, it is just that you guys will partner with us in trying to get the funds. Um, you guys are behind us in getting it. So like, we, you know, if you're more comfortable going to business and be like, we're, we are fundraising for a splash pad while you donate. Instead of right now going to business and be like, well, we might get a splash. we are fundraising for a splash pad while you donate, instead of right now going to business and be like, well, we might get a splash pad while you donate. You know, it just kind of gives us that backing of the city that we will have a splash pad, it might be done next year, it might get done in five years.
So to clarify, you guys are not asking for money from us right now. You're going to raise the thirty-five hundred dollars to write the grant.
Yes.
If we say yes, and after that, then we will discuss. We're good for you guys to partner with us.
Yeah, and it also.
To have that plot of property to potentially put this splash pad there.
And it also gave us a spot um, to bring our funds to that we do fundraise. So that we are, we are hoping that the city would um, hold on to the funds for us. So anybody that would want to donate, would donate to the City of Julietta with Ree's Splash Pad, the Illinois Splash Pad. And that you guys would hold those funds for us until we get um, ready and.
And we will grow.
Yeah, we could start a.
No, no problem.
And most important slide, happy kids with thank you. Any questions? Yes.
So, why would anyone ever go to the pool? It's this much better than the pool. I heard a lot of comments like that.
Well, there, there's a difference. There really is a difference between the pool and the splash pad. I mean, some older kids will prefer to go to the pool. It's just a matter of what you want to do that day. Some people just want to go and get wet real quick for five seconds. They don't want to plan because they live maybe out in Southwood. Like my, I'll use my sister as an example. She doesn't go to the pool very often, but because it takes a lot to pack up and everything. But to go to the park and have a picnic and just get wet real quick, it's not that big a deal versus the pool, but.
It's also proximity. So you have a lot of kids that live in Kendrick that go to the pool every single day. And then you have a lot of kids in Julietta that try to go down to the creek, try to walk to Kendrick, try to get rides to Kendrick. It, it just gives each kids in each town that might not have that transportation, it gives them something to do as well. So it'll absolutely, both things will still get used. I mean, look at Pollock, they, one town has both, and they're still both very much used.
I mean, you guys are go-getters, and you've done a good job on this. What if you put that energy into getting kids to the pool? You already have a piece.
I don't think the, I don't think the pool hasn't, I don't think they have an issue getting kids. I don't think, I mean, I don't think they need us to fundraise for them. I don't think they need us to.
Let the mom with the little stuff. I mean, if you have any, if you have toddlers, you can't just, I mean, as, it's a big deal to pack up your kids and plan the pool, and then you have to watch them every single second. I have three kids, none of them know how to swim. Like, if I have a splash pad, then I know they're not gonna drown. I can let them run through the, just the water.
And I, I think it's just different too. Yeah, I, I think it's just different. And, and again, I, I, I personally don't think there's a need for us to, you know, to go get anything for the pool. I mean, kids go, yeah, if they want it, you know, if they want us to, we can.
Well, and the pool I've, I've known as too is like, especially this year is really busy, but that pool is not that big. So you have tons and tons of kids in there.
Well, and they can only have up to forty-eight in there.
Right.
And the one day I was there, we were at forty-eight and they were turning people away.
Your season would be longer too for a splash pad. I mean, the pool is only open till basically just after school is in recess and then just before it starts again, where the splash pad could be open potentially twice as long.
And again, and again, and we are not competing with the pool at all. I mean, we feel like there's room for both.
Right.
I mean, yeah, we don't think this type of thing.
You don't think it would undermine the pool?
Not at all. And, and, I mean, Kendrick is on board with it and they have the pool. I mean, they don't think it will take anything away from the pool. I mean, they are a hundred percent, I mean, they, you know, talking to many people in Kendrick, they are, they don't think that it will take anything away from the pool. At all. And if it does, we will, fundraise for the pool as well, huh? Yes. I have my slide.
Don't worry, it's not like I get all the money.
Don't you have a pool?
I will not.
No, I am a huge supporter. I'm at the pool every day. I'm there every day. I only live a block away from the pool. I'm there every day.
Yeah, and again, and that's.
I over my kids with splash pad.
And that's proximity. So she lives a block from the pool, so she goes to the, she will probably go to the pool more than the splash pad. Versus Amy who lives right up the road and she will walk to the splash pad, you know? I mean, it, it just depends on where they live. And the age of their kids too. A lot of the teenagers end up at the pool.
Pleasant on, on the school side too, they do bus those kids to the aquatic center for the end of the year party. This is an opportunity for them to support locals, stay here in the park and order from local places for food. And then we don't have to send our kids all the way to the aquatic center because most of the time, we can't go as parents with them. Because they can only have so many people. Well, this is an awesome opportunity for them to be in our park and stay close by, you know? Any other questions? I do love your guys' enthusiasm. I think you guys have worked really, really hard on this and I'm very impressed.
Thank you.
It's been a very good job.
Thank you.
The lid. Walk away and let.
I move to go to contract to see the, the, the pipe of the splash pad, Greg.
I'll second.
Yay.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Our field.
Who's your presentation?
Thank you. Thank you very much.
We can go. Let's go.
They're working good. Wait, I see the passes already. They follow it when it's open.
People get their shots and everybody's happy. Now five people to do help me with the library. Yes, no, I agree. Because I know that's a word deterrent that gets started. Thank you, guys.
Take the hard seat.
There's not been any decisions made yet, and that's one further to get decided. And then after that, then I'll bring it back. We just want, if something was happening, we didn't want to know at the very last minute and say, oh, yeah, we're due next month. That's why you have, I'll make that, and we'll probably do the same thing again. Hopefully, something will come up. And if it is the last day before, I'd like to have the opportunity to just make it so somebody does account to be waiting another month. If it does come at that time. But anyway, first of all, thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Dave Johnson, I'm from Alexandria. We're here to talk to you about getting a special permit, putting our older double-wide in. If it wouldn't, this is dodgy, but I've known about it, you're not in some big trouble with you guys. It is an older trailer, it's a sixty-nine, but they bombed through, uh, put brand-new windows in it, uh, brand-new doors.
New wiring.
All brand-new wiring.
So is there?
Do you, do you have pictures?
Yeah, I have it.
And they put a five-twelve, five-twelve pitch on it and all that.
Yeah.
Did they put new siding on it too? I've been to.
No, we're doing that next.
We will put new siding on.
We'll put new siding on next year.
And the wire is, is it supposed to be copper?
It's all copper now.
Right, it has to be HUD approved, correct? Does, do you know if it's HUD approved?
I believe so.
But you, it's got pictures of the new junction box. You can just scroll through until you get my granddaughter's pictures.
I'm so sorry. I'll just come over.
There's, there's a bunch of pictures there, you can scroll through.
It had a, a pretty steep roof on it.
It does, it does right now because it's a watered setting.
We're taking that off, we're putting, putting our own on. And it is going to be on the foundation.
On a permanent foundation? On a permanent foundation?
So you're, are you gonna tear down your house now?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's dodgy, I mean, it's not worth living.
The garage too, or?
No.
Not the shop will stay.
The shop will stay.
Until next year, then we plan on putting a covered patio on that, on that cement pad.
You can contact the building inspector.
I'll check it from real quick.
Well, I'd like to know for sure that the wiring is approved.
Yeah, I think, um, I was, I think I took a picture of it.
Yeah, the wiring needs to be.
I can't remember what it said in our ordinance. I think it had to have, it just doesn't say that. Somebody don't chop their head for it.
I believe it's just the HUD approved.
Yeah, I think it, that's what it said. Isn't that what I sent you guys that night? Does it have to be HUD approved?
I think, like, Steve Rissling could explain or tell you how, Steve Rissling down the road, I think, could explain to you like,
Yes.
what that process would be.
Yeah, he, I already talked to him about it, okay, and stuff. It's got a brand-new panel box in it. Took all the old screw-in filter fuses out, put circuit breakers in. That one picture, you can see where they cut all the new, all the new wiring that's in.
Um, when are you guys wanting to do all this?
Well, I gotta have the trailer moved out there by the thirty-first of August. For, for the whole thing. So right now, we got everything, tearing the house down, hold, I mean, everything's on hold until we figure out if we can get it in there.
I think these can be refurbished, but again, I think it just comes down to an inspection, so I think talking to the inspector.
Yeah, I'll, I'll get ahold of the inspector to see when he can go and work and.
I think I'll have it Tuesday. Every Tuesday, I'll be building inspector.
Oh, okay, for here, okay.
Yeah.
I'll be in here Tuesday then.
Hold on just a second, I want to find that. What it said. Do you, have you read on it? You guys have read on that?
I have, in the past.
I read on it for my building.
I just read on it the other day. It was like two weeks ago. I don't know what it said though.
It, it was a date, but then again, I.
Manufactured homes, here it is.
It can be refurbished, I believe.
Well, that's first and quiet. Um, anyway. Whatever you guys want to do. I can't find it exactly. It's on the spot. Okay, so any person placing a mobile home or manufactured homeless person can placement permit, the city clerk pay the applicable fees, it can use your water, um, what else? Let's talk about all the connections, it doesn't talk about. I can't find it on there. Anyway, what do you guys want to do?
Well, I mean, I don't have a problem as long as it's, you said, approved.
Yeah, it says must have certification by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development.
Where'd you find that?
That's on, it's in the, under manufactured home fifteen-point-oh-eight, fifteen-point-oh-eight dot oh-three-zero.
Wrong one there.
Yeah, it's under the single white thing though.
Oh, no, I, I went down too far. It's manufactured.
Under the four-zero?
Two-zero.
Which are twenty-two feet or long, or, or, or greater in width.
Must be set on a concrete pad or footings.
So how wide is it?
It's twenty-five by fifty-three.
So, and then it has to have the entry porch, all that stuff on it.
Yes.
Must have pitched roof. If more, okay, here's what it is. More than five years old must have a special use permit by the city council prior replacement. To obtain certain permit, it must demonstrate that home, if it's placed meets current life safety and fire code standards, is in good condition. Will confirm to the character of the surrounding neighborhood, conform to the character of the surrounding neighborhood, and will not have a negative impact on property values. The city council may attack reasonable conditions to ensure that such home is safe and compatible with housing in the neighborhood. So you need to make sure that it's uh, safety and fire codes, up to safety and fire code standards.
Letter E is must have certification by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. And how you get that, I think that would, you could even call Moscow, and they'll say, how do we approve?
Well.
I'm not in the space, you know, it's county inspector.
Yeah.
But it, it doesn't say anything about a particular year, so I, I'm pretty sure.
It said over, if, I, I kept reading that if it was over five or five. I can save my money.
Yeah.
As long as it meets all that, I think, I mean, I'm okay, I think.
As long as you can prove that it meets all that.
I'm fine.
So that we need to make a motion.
Glad you don't do better than what you have there.
Tuesday, so Tuesday I'll be here and I'll give the inspector.
Well, we can't make a motion until we have all the information.
Well, what we can say is, I, well, no, just listen for a second.
Yes, master.
I move to consider, allow them to have the permit provided they can show all that stuff to indicate it meets all of our requirements.
I'll second that.
Then we don't have to table it so that you guys can move forward, as long as you, so as long as everything is according to that code there and we can get copy of that or it's on our website. And as long as they can prove that the building inspector is okay with it, says that it meets all that, I'm fine with moving forward with it.
Into dot O E dot O two.
How, how are, how are you guys going to demolish the home that's there? What are you guys going to do? Is that, is that a city concern?
No. We was gonna have a burp, but we found out we can't, so. I had a nice long top with the cheese, so, um, anyway, we got an escalator coming in, it's gonna crunch it up, then I'm gonna haul it to the dump in Wilster. Give her a little.
Can you second my motion?
I can second your motion.
Okay.
All in favor. The last is.
Thank you.
I'm glad you have pictures, thank you. So I'm glad you have pictures. So I'm glad you have pictures. I have the inside ones.
He has the outside ones, I have the inside ones, so I can.
Thank you very much.
Well, you're gonna consider off-road diesel.
So I talked to Coleman Oil again yesterday, and I talked to, Mike left me a message about what they do down there. So as long as we are under a hundred-and-ten gallons and it's mobile, then we don't have to have a containment area. And they said that if we work with them, they're through here on Tuesdays, then if we're getting, you know, seventy-five to a hundred gallons, then they can just stop and fill it up. So they won't, we won't be on a keep fill, we'll just have to try and watch the week before we decide to go that route. But if we go that route, the options are a slip tank in the back of one of the pickups, but then the pickup always has to be available somewhere on Tuesday for them to fill it. The other option is, I did see a little four-hundred-dollar trailer at Harbor Freight. And we buy a slip tank from North Forty for about four-hundred dollars, put it on the trailer. Then we just have to put in the pump and all that for it, and then it's mobile, but it's still there for them to fill it. It has to be, we remain mobile and be under a hundred-and-ten gallons. And then you could always, we could.
We have a little trailer down there too.
It's a army trailer, yeah.
Oh, well, there you go. So you could, I didn't know there was a trailer down there.
But it has a roundy hitch. What are those called?
Fennel hitch. But if we're not pulling it anywhere.
It just has to be mobile.
Mobile. And you can, you can get a fennel hitch stinger for your pickups, and we have to move it, but.
We have a couple.
There you go.
We have one.
Then we'd rent.
For a hundred gallons, how much money are you going to save by having a path that's getting to the service station?
Well, the service station doesn't offer off-road diesel, so we're, we can submit back for our tax relief, but we still have to pay the higher price versus both, both diesel price.
How much is it per gallon?
It's like six bucks a gallon right now.
What is it?
What's it?
If you have it there and then you, then don't you have to fill out your papers and to get your, your uh, tax. If you have it there and then you, uh, then don't you have to fill out your papers and to get your, your, uh, tax back?
If we get...
Do we go pay tax?
No, they take the tax off at the register. I mean, it's not included in the price, the bulk price, but they don't have it in.
They don't have off-road, so they have on-road, so we have to pay for on-road, and then we have to fill out a form, correct, Mike? I think is what we would have to do.
Bonnie takes care of that.
Bonnie would have to fill out a form.
Get your taxes back.
Our tax is back.
Right.
Whereas if we had...
If we were buying on-road diesel down here, not only are we paying six dollars a gallon, we're paying all the, all the taxes and stuff too that we don't get back, right?
And then we're, well, we would get the tax back, but you have to submit a form for the tax back.
What I'm going to get at, what is the difference in buying at the service station or buying at...
On-road versus off-road?
About fifty cents a gallon.
At least. Yeah, plus it bulk prices, we might be able to get it, you know, a little lower bulk price, if we do it under a gallon.
And what, what did you guys say you, uh, average your year going through for the off-road diesel? What do you use for, what all do you use for?
Tobacco, the dump truck, the...
So you have a lot of use for it, tractor.
Well, fire department, we go through.
We're not worried about you guys.
We go through a lot more than the city boys.
Four, four of our rigs are running on, or three of our rigs are running on diesel down there. And do we pay for your diesel?
Yeah. And we don't have to have a...
And there's a lot of stuff you forgot.
A double-walled tank, do we?
Nope, as long as it's under a...
As long as it's not buried.
Well, as long as it's not buried and it's under a hundred and ten gallons, then we can just get...
Couldn't we use this diesel tank right here?
It's not mobile.
It's gotta be mobile, is that what you mean?
Well, put it in the back of, in the back of that.
Well, does it have...
It might be a redneck gift.
I don't know. It's a...
Well, you gotta have bapples in it. You gotta have bapples in a, in a slip tank. So that was something that we could check on, because he's got a baffle. But that's, that's what I found out from Coleman Oil, I know Josh is...
I can loan you a slip tank, but I'm taking mine out.
So that's... That's kind of where we're at.
Keep in mind.
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna be saving at least fifty cents a gallon, at least, on average. Uh, he couldn't give me the bulk price because he wasn't at a computer. I can get bulk price from him and then we can compare it, but at six dollars a gallon, you know, and...
If we're gonna deal with Coleman Oil, why can't we just go to Kendrick and get off-road diesel from Coleman?
Well, because then if they put it in a trailer, then they gotta drag the trailer around, and I would just...
I mean, no, why can't we drive up there three miles each way and get off-road diesel?
Well, we can't drive the tractor up there.
Oh, okay, I understand.
The backhoe. I mean, if you wanna siphon it into the tractor for us, have the fire truck to go back and forth, I'm good with that.
I'm sure you are.
Pull that traffic?
Yeah, that's the reason we're looking at...
Just sell the tractor up the bike path.
Right. Right, that's why we were looking at a slip tank or something like that, because the tractor and the backhoe. What are your thoughts?
I think it's a cop, yeah.
Plus the security line, like, do you want it locked up or not?
So there...
It'll be in the...
It'll be in the fence and then you can put a lock on the pump.
It's got a locking cap, plus you can, plus the gate will be locked.
Then I think you can lock the actual...
Yeah.
No, it's...
Lock the system.
Are we gonna have a little tally on that as far as how much gets stripped down, all that stuff? And so it's recorded when they use it for such a sick vehicle?
Yeah, so each vehicle, you like, what we have where, the fire trucks have numbers, correct?
Perhaps.
Okay, so when you guys would get fuel, you would just write down the gallons?
Yeah, we do that now.
We do it just like you already do there.
We do it now. It has that metered pump, but you write down exactly what you...
I think it's for the shop to see how it works out, and I think it's, especially if they don't have it down here, I think it's great.
So we'd be looking, if we can use the army trailer, then we're just looking at the slip tank and then the pump and all that, which is gonna be...
And you said under a hundred and fifteen?
Hundred and ten.
Hundred and ten, okay.
Yep. So maybe Josh could get some prices on some tanks and pumps and everything for us for next meetings?
Actually, I'd probably tell you right now.
I did look a little bit on North Forty as well. I didn't know what trailer, because they make an L shape and a, just a square, right?
Well, I would say a lot of them have that trailer down there.
Yeah, so I would measure your trailer and see which one's gonna fit in there the best. And even if we decided to not go with bulk diesel, we still could get Coleman Oil cars and just drag it back and forth. From, you know, get it from the pumps in Kendrick or whatever. But it would just be, where are they coming through on Tuesdays, they could just stop and, you know, we know, you know, let them know the week ahead that we're gonna need fuel.
Yeah, that's a pretty heavy trailer, but if you drank it back and forth to Kendrick, I would suggest to put new tires on it, but...
Yeah.
See, there's another...
I did, I did drive it to Kendrick once.
That's a heavy duty truck.
Here's a hundred, hundred gallon steel, uh, tank that would fit in the back of that, and it's rectangle, uh, for four hundred and twenty-nine dollars.
So then you're just gonna need the pump and filters, because you're gonna wanna put, definitely put a spin-on filter on that system.
And then the pump with...
Eight, three and a half.
A fill right pump. That's four forty-nine also.
Four forty-nine?
Yeah.
Is that on one ten or twelve?
It's one, one ten.
Okay.
No, we're gonna have to buy tires, we have to fill it up. If we just leave it there and have Coleman Oil fill it up.
Yeah, we don't have to move the tires.
Then we'll have to buy tires, and it's still technically mobile. So we're looking at probably a thousand, twelve hundred bucks. They'll have taxes on it too, though.
Yeah, I mean, it costs...
Two hundred gallons of fuel.
Well, they don't, so, say we're plowing in the middle of the night or the weekend, we need diesel and market's closed, then they have to use their credit card.
Well, at that point, I would hope to shout that they're smart enough to not say that, that'll be negative.
Well, if they're plowing a lot, I mean, it, you know, if the tractor could burn a lot of diesel on a lot, I'm just thinking that, you know, that's my thoughts, but...
I agree with you.
So there are definitely times when this would be a valuable tool, absolutely. I'm motion.
Well, do it.
To do it.
You gotta say it.
You have to do what?
To install off-road diesel fuel to me. Where? F W two E.
Makes life easier, I should say.
I'll second it.
All in favor? Passes.
So the program, Phil's have a program today, the app tool, and, uh, I will forward it to each of you in email. Basically, it's a, um, it's a SCADA system, which modern, treatment plants, wastewater or water plants, they all have SCADA now, which is just basically a data system that stores data instead of, um, doing it by analog, which is writing everything down, or having a graph, which we have down at the water plant, but it's not working. Anyway, so it will store all the data, and then it will also have control points where we can control certain features of the water plant from our phone. And so you just open it up, you can see all the reservoir levels, you can control, uh, the water plant, the pumps and booster pump and all that.
And we're already set up for that down there?
Well, so the, the app is six hundred dollars a year. The equipment is five thousand dollars one time for the cellular equipment. And then Phil told me it will just be his installation time, uh, to put it in, but it's, it's not an all-day job, it's just a couple hours where he swaps out the dialer that's down there, because we have a phones, we already have a phone line for our alarms now. And he would be putting a cellular phone system, you know, so we wouldn't be connected to T D S anywhere down there. We would just be our own cellular network, the city, whatever, own cell system. And then eventually...
That's through, through like inland, basically?
He said it has to go through Verizon or A T and T.
We have T mobile.
But... I'm Verizon.
Verizon shares with, I work here.
Verizon's putting in a brand-new tower. Up here at the star.
Five T's.
Right now.
No way. Seriously?
So I have Verizon and I get internet.
I wouldn't.
Well, I would.
That's the start of my day.
Yes, they're putting one, what is it?
Five G for it?
So...
Yep.
Anyway, um, it is, well, it is a chunk of money. Stillman, I've asked him out in parking lot about what SCADA system they were planning on doing for the wastewater system, and they're not that far down the line yet. Um, so maybe I'm gonna forward it to him to look at. The, it would save a lot of mileage and a lot of time on weekends. And especially if we're doing a project where we don't have to drive, physically drive down there and check every time. We don't, we wouldn't even have to write anything down, it would all be logged in the system. You just plug in a data card or a log, basically, for different things. So, you know, um, I'm not sure now is the exact right time, but I don't know when it is, I think.
How about making sure this type of, uh, trigger line is afforded in L C S E for last day, and has similar on vacation?
Yeah, I mean, it would give us our alarms, or it would just pop up on our screen and then it's like, oh, we need to run down there.
Like at the plant, or like, if I'm at home and your guys' power goes off, the Vista power goes off, and Clearwater doesn't, I have no idea that the power went off down here. And not always does it cause problems with the water plant, but sometimes it does. And well number nine shuts off every single time the power is off.
The power blips, it turns on.
So that's a, a good alarm to, to have. Um, and if the air compressor quits working, it'll send us an alarm, because the system will malfunction and it won't run. And that'll send us an, an alarm, or, and like Justin said, if we're knee-deep in mud and we are worried about what's going on at the water plant, it, we can look and it'll tell us, instead of, and stop what we're doing and drag down there. And really important is the data, which you can troubleshoot immediately. See, and we can put together the audits and also the search.
Well, Stillman, what do you think? I mean, we're going to have a SCADA system.
I have some questions for you.
Yes, we're going to have a SCADA system at some point. I mean...
Yeah, so you're primarily talking the water system, right?
Right.
If the wastewater treatment plant's a little different with the ability equipments right there. Um, the water system, it's different because you've got wells in different locations, um, you've got things spread around town. Um, you've got your water reservoirs, um, so do those currently connect with each other in any way, shape, or form with radio towers, anything like that right now?
Yes. Everything is new at the water plant, and it's all connected by brand-new digital towers.
Okay, so what you're describing to me is going to do away with the radio towers. Because you'll have a cell link at each location. The other concern that I have with that, or maybe it's not a concern, but does that annual cost that they're quoting you, does that include your cellphone bill? Uh, because you will inherit a cellphone bill for each of those as well. And I don't know if that is being included in that price.
Oh, so you're saying that the, the base will have a cell bill?
Yeah. So, uh, each location where you have a cellular link, um, it's basically like planting a cellphone inside each of those locations.
I don't think that that is how they would do it. I think that it would be, the information would still be sent via radio.
Yeah, I think our radios are separate.
And then there would be a base at the water plant.
Would be possible to...
So you're just talking the, the single link, I'm sorry.
Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
You're, you're just talking at the water plant, that's your one.
Yeah, just one link.
And this is, this is a cloud-based data system, is, is what they're quoting you. I would be interested to find out which it is, and I would like you to talk to our controls engineers, so that you don't get yourself into something that you didn't know everything about first. Um, because there are multiple options, and there are some reasons why you might not want to go to a cell-linked system, or even a cloud-based system like that. Um, and so I would suggest that, but you can do whatever you want.
And I would suggest Phil coming down.
Yes, I will email you the city council the data on the app. I will copy you on it, stillman, and I will ask Phil that, uh, to make a presentation, uh, if he feels...
I'd also like some information from his controller, person.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, we just, we just have an all-new SCADA system put in in the city of Apple, uh, it's a pretty comparable-sized system to yours. Um, and, uh, they don't have anything connected by a cellular, um, on this new system. They can access it remotely like what you're describing, uh, now. They weren't able to before. Um, and, uh, um, you know, they use a radio system primarily for connecting all their facilities together. Their connection to, uh, get to it remotely is, um, they're actually connected through a, uh, an internet, um, connection. Ideally, if you have fiber, it'd be best if you put it on fiber. If you don't have fiber through town, then the next best...
You have fiber right outside the water plant and all over town.
Then that would be my, my, that's likely what our controls engineers would say, is you probably would be better off doing that than the cell link, but... I'm not the control engineer, so I want you to talk to our controls guys.
We'll just, uh, probably touch them and then we'll, we'll talk about it.
Absolutely. Yeah.
I just think, um, you know...
Well, I move to table, table the requesting permission to purchase utility control application till we get more information.
I'll second.
Sorry, Joshua. Passes.
That was good. That's good.
We need, um, vehicle inspection.
Did you look over that? I know you were gone last month, Josh, did you look over it?
Maybe.
Any thoughts or concerns? Anybody else have any thoughts or concerns?
No, I'll make a motion to pass the, the inspection checklist.
I second.
All in favor? Passes.
Then we consider the payoff of the L G I P loan of thirty-one thousand, six hundred and seventeen dollars and forty-two cents.
Actually, the, the original loan was two hundred and fifty thousand. Uh, our payments are yearly, so we pay seventeen thousand, four hundred and forty once a year at this time. Um, principal that we normally pay is fourteen thousand, eight thirty-two and ninety cents, but our interest is two thousand, six oh seven ten. Now, next year we pay it off, but Howard had called me and noticed that maybe we should pay it off this year and save close to twenty-five hundred in interest. So it's not exactly gonna be the thirty-one thousand, six seventeen forty-two. Might be a little bit more, depending upon how much of that interest we have to pay from this year, but it's gonna be less, I think, than... Uh, and we have the funds in the L G I P, um, twenty-four nineteen, we have enough. And we still have money in that leftover, in that fund, if we did pay it off. Because I think we have close to about forty-eight thousand in there. And, um, so...
What is the L G I P again?
It's, um, the, um, government investments. It's a pool that we have, we've, um, if you look at the L G I Ps on your, um, other deposits, down where I give you how much we have in our checkings, savings, certificates, there's an L G I P, and we have about seven hundred and fifty more than in, in the L G I Ps. If you look at the twenty-four nineteen, it will tell you exactly how much is in there, right, as of this month that I just got.
What's the government investment pool?
It's where we put money, do we just take money out of the checking and we put it into this pool? But it's not like it, it's almost kind of like a certificate, but it's not, because you don't have to wait for it to mature. You can take those funds out or put them in whenever you want.
Why's it called a loan? Is that what they're asking? Yeah.
Okay, no, we have a loan with the USDA through there, and that's how we pay them, through that, using that.
Oh, so we're gonna pay off the...
The loan. The loan.
Okay.
So we have two of them, and the other one is, um, eight hundred thousand. We still have to pay four hundred and seventy-two thousand for that. Um, that's, I don't think it's gonna get paid off until like, like, twenty thirty-two, I think was, um... But just so you know, and we put in, um... But just so you know, and we put in, um. I'm sure we put in forty-five hundred every month, so that when the year comes around, we can pay it off, so.
I think that's a great idea, I think, you guys, if we have it in there and get it off.
Sure, uh, what's the USDA loans for?
For like the wastewater.
Wastewater.
And, or the water, actually, the water one right now.
The water treatment plant from ninety-six?
Yeah. Okay, I'll make a motion to pay off the LGIP loan, ninety-one dash oh three.
I second. All in favor? Passes.
So Bonnie, did you make those changes that we talked about?
Yes. Yep, I, I made those, um.